This is a concept that is not new to this committee and certainly not new to this chamber. A previous version of this bill received support from the majority of both caucuses on the House floor for a couple of reasons that I'll go over, along with the slight changes from the previous version of this bill. First of all, we know that our graduation pathways that Bill I sponsored in years past 1599 helped to create multiple pathways for students to find their way from their secondary education in K-12 system into whatever avenue they have before them. And the CTE pathway is one that has continued to be a challenge for us to build out fully. The question I'm going to raise again, the differences between some of the, in this bill compared to the previous. Some question that has come up in the past is whether or not this bill would impede the build-out of that, of those CTE programs as an effort. We don't believe so. I believe that those CTE pathways are built for the masses of students. If you imagine, you might have an industry in your district or in your community that needs a full workforce and a press to get that workforce developed, a strong CTE program built out helps to deliver that workforce. In the cases where you have a smaller industry, a smaller business, even a family business, where students may be able to exhibit their ability to meet the standards set forth by learning standards in state law, we want to provide those individual students the same opportunity to graduate. I just want to thank the 386 folks who have signed in to support this bill. They come from every corner of the state. They come from the business community, the labor community, school districts, teachers and parents, and particularly the students who testified in the work session during Assembly Days, talking about how this bill would help them to earn some graduation credit while they're doing other important work before their preferred pathway in the future, which was to go on to a four-year university. So with that, I will happily stand for questions, but look forward to the testimony.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the prime sponsor? The Chair would just ask the prime sponsor. You have been working on this legislation very diligently for, I've lost count of how many years. Particularly for the listening audience and perhaps for the edification of the new members, would you tell us, what did you do over the previous interim that you've incorporated as changes in response to what you've heard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, in one case, there was some question from folks, just like, what is this going to look like? I'm having a hard time really envisioning this. So there is some language in this version that helps to articulate exactly what that could look like. You heard some of that in Ethan's briefing. Secondly, there was some question about whether or not particular students would be given a greater, a path of lower resistance, for example, or reduced expectations. But this committee has been very focused on remaining in a place where we have high expectations for every student. In this pathway in particular, students would not only have to meet the metrics set by the school system to help them graduate and earn those credits, but would also, in addition, have to be signed off by their host, maybe community entity or work site, that they are also college and career ready. So it's actually, in my belief, a higher standard to be met than may have been assumed under a previous version of the bill. The Washington State Educate, let me see if I can, I wrote it down, so I didn't mess it up. Education, Research and Data Center, I know lovingly as ERDC, is ready and available to answer questions that they have following students beyond K-12 graduation and into their workforce down the road. Those questions have come up in this committee before, and that, that information is available to us, and we can tap on ERDC to provide that, so we are sure our students are getting equitable access to their futures.
Thank you. Representative Stonier, I guess I have one final question. You've heard me speak of one of my, actually, my youngest granddaughter, who is now in her second year at college. She started writing a novel when she was 13 years old. She kept at it for years and years and years. And she finally, in her senior year, published a novel, which is several chapters long. It is, I've had to be told, it is a dystopian fantasy. And she provided the cover art. So she not only wrote a very lengthy novel, she also learned the business of how to publish the novel. She also did the artwork for the novel. And of course, this is all on her own time. Is that the type of performance exhibition that would be indicative that a student is ready for college and career?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your question reminds me of why I was thrilled to have Representative Dye as the number two on this bill. You might recall that her testimony on the floor, her floor speech in support of the Mastery-Based Work Group was an illustration of stories just like that, where students who are engaged in something that they care deeply about, that they have great interest in, will spend more time, more energy, will do independent research outside of the assignments that they're engaged in in class. And if anybody here thinks about a time that they had something they were deeply interested in doing, whether it was in school or outside of school, I suspect they had that very same experience, where they spent far more time researching the do's and don'ts of that particular craft. And in my view, those, that level of engagement is the best learning environment for students and is most compelling to them to stick through something that may be particularly challenging.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Seeing none, we will welcome, welcome the Majority Floor Leader back to the dais and Vice Chair Shavers.
Can we have Randy Spalding, Michelle, sorry. Randy Spalding, can we have Michelle Nims, John Parker and Brian Matheson on deck remotely? And can we have Joe Cummings and Amy Brackenbury come up as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Santos and members of the committee. I'm Randy Spalding, Executive Director for the State Board of Education, testifying in support of our request legislation, House Bill 1308. I'd like to thank Representative Stonier for her support in developing this proposal, as well as many stakeholders who provided feedback as we put this together, and also a thank you to the committee staff for a great summary of the bill. The three parts of the diploma build on one another. The 24-credit framework provides students with the knowledge and skills they need in English, math and other core subjects. What makes the pathway requirement distinct is the focus on students' individual goals in alignment with their high school and beyond plan. Pathways are intended to provide students with multiple ways to demonstrate readiness for their own education and career goals, and relevance is key. For the last three years, the Board has been engaged in research directed by the Legislature to identify barriers and provide recommendations for changes to the existing pathways and to recommend additional pathway options. Our conclusion from that work is that the pathway options do not meet the needs of all students. In some cases, students complete pathways that do not match their individual goals, in which case the pathway is not serving its intended purpose. A strong, consistent theme we heard from students, families and educators throughout the three years of research is the need for more relevant, engaging and authentic options, including options in subject areas beyond English and math that can be customized to better align with students' individual goals. As we recover from the pandemic, it's more important than ever to help students engage in their learning. This proposal responds to community feedback and to a strong research base on student learning by adding a tool to the toolbox of options that school districts can choose to offer. A performance-based pathway would provide more authentic measure of students' ability and their learning, leading to deeper understanding and more engaging and relevant experience. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Before we move on to the remote testifiers, just confirming, is Josie Cummings and Amy Brackenbury here?
Sorry about that. I wasn't sure if I was after the remote or not. Madam Chair, members of the committee, for the record, my name is Josie Cummings. On behalf of the Building Industry Association of Washington, here today in support of House Bill 1308. BIW believes in giving Washington students more options when it comes to education, which is why we support adding the optional performance-based pathway. We believe this bill creates an opportunity to connect industry to the classroom, especially for schools that are not able to currently offer the CTE pathway. This just gives another option. We believe that this, this gives an option to students to show comprehension of school standards in an applied, real-life setting. We also appreciate the inclusion of notifying parents and students of what all of their graduation pathways are, starting in eighth grade. We think more communication of what is available to them at an earlier age is a really positive thing, so we commend this bill and I hope you can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to remote testimony, we have a question. Representative Rood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Randy, are there other states that are utilizing performance-based pathways? And if so, which states?
I'll have to get you the list, but yes, there are a number of other states that have a pathway model and would include a performance-based pathway, and so we can provide that information to the committee.
One more question, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you describe for me how you engaged industry in developing this bill? It looks like there's support from industry and some opposition, so curious what that looked like.
Yeah, so we've done a lot of outreach for this bill. As I mentioned, we have three years of research that included industry partners who were responding to our research poll. We had a researcher that helped us with that design, included focus groups, surveys, et cetera. We also have done a lot of engagement over the last year in particular, reaching out to communities and individual groups through staff connections and others.
Thank you. Are there further questions for this panel? Seeing none, we appreciate your testimony, and we will move next to John Parker.
Good afternoon, Chair Santos and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is John Parker, and I'm Superintendent of the Central Valley School District, and I am here today in support of House Bill 1308. This policy empowers students to take the next step after graduation by providing a meaningful diploma. It extends the opportunity for more students to pursue their chosen education and career. We strongly support the expansion and the addition of a rigorous performance-based paced pathway that allows students to prove their knowledge and skills by appropriate demonstration rather than just standardized tests. This bill extends the opportunity for students to pursue their chosen education and career in relevant and meaningful ways. Employers in our community often ask to see examples of potential employees' work artifacts during the interview process. Student exhibits and comprehensive portfolios are examples of just two artifacts that we would support students with during this process. This performance pathway also prepares students for future job interviews in authentic and meaningful manner. This bill reflects the innovation and opportunity that our students deserve. The Central Valley School District Board and staff work continuously to focus our education system on our students so they can pursue their diverse skills, interests and abilities, ultimately allowing them to meet the multitude of needs in our businesses and community. And I also want to add to Chair Santos' list of students of what her granddaughter was doing, I'd like to also include Kylie, an individual who performed and did an exceptional job and wants to be a welder, and she did a magnificent job showcasing how all the different standards wove together in a magnificent presentation that illustrates the success of this bill. Thank you for considering this bill and for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll move next to Michelle Nims.
Good afternoon, Chair Santos and members of the committee. I am Michelle Nims, Past President of Washington State PTA, the state's largest child advocacy association, and a parent of a recent high school graduate. We support House Bill 1308, which adds a performance-based graduation pathway to the existing options. Our members remain concerned about inequitable access to the current graduation pathways and the emphasis on testing and academic achievement as the main options. As you know, students have different strengths, challenges and paths into the future. Recent outreach by the State Board of Education shows that students want more flexible options to show their readiness for graduation. We support the performance-based pathway because it would allow students to show their readiness aligned with state learning standards and focused on their post-graduation goals using a portfolio, community-based project or other evidence of real-world experience. The bill creates standards for rigorous evaluation of these projects and requires each district to adopt a policy that conforms with state requirements. This bill makes other improvements. Many families are unfamiliar with graduation pathways. This bill requires schools to communicate information about pathways annually by eighth grade, but encourages communication as early as sixth grade, when students begin thinking about their post-high school plans. It addresses issues of equity by requiring that information conform with the school district's language access policy, as well as requiring districts to examine data on student groups participating in and completing each graduation pathway option offered by the district, and addressing disproportionate participation by student groups. Finally, we appreciate the deletion of the list of allowable AP classes, giving the State Board the responsibility and flexibility to decide which classes meet pathway requirements. Please pass House Bill 1308. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brian Matheson?
Thank you, Chair Santos and honorable members of the committee. For the record, my name is Dr. Brian Matheson with Vancouver Public Schools. I'm here today in support of House Bill 1308. We'd like to thank Representative Stonier for her longstanding advocacy that always puts students first. We support this bill because our district is committed to relevant, engaging and authentic options for students. We're also committed to rigorous standards, post-secondary readiness, and providing every student with a meaningful education. We agree that the current pathway options do not meet the needs of all students. Our internal research tells us that of the 1,601 VPS students that graduated in 2022, 16% or 257 were approved for an emergency waiver, meaning the current pathways did not meet the needs of all of our students. Without additional pathway options, we're concerned that as many as 15% of our students may not graduate. For instance, John is a student who took a number of honors classes, but school wasn't always easy. He earned some Ds and some Fs. By the time he graduated, however, John met the course requirements to go directly to a four-year university, and he earned a seal by literacy. John struggled with standardized tests, however, and because he had some transfers, he wasn't able to access all the graduation pathways. Without the waiver, John wouldn't have graduated. John, however, has clearly demonstrated to us his readiness to graduate and move on to a four-year college. Another student we'll call Emily has had significant cognitive delays, and her individual education plan has communication through eye movements. Emily's IEP team and family agree that she's made tremendous gains, and her transition plan outlines her next steps. Our current graduation pathways, however, aren't accessible to Emily. We do want to work with the sponsor as the bill moves forward. We have suggestions about the language in the bill outlining the compliance measures of the new pathway. We'd also like to talk about how this policy looks once implemented. Our schools have well-established processes and rigorous compliance measures to engage our community, implement and evaluate performance-based pathways. We'll submit written comments. But we love the idea of a performance-based learning experience that can better meet the needs of all students. We thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working with Representative Stonier.
Thank you. Do we have questions for this panel? The Chair does, but I see the Vice Chair has work to do. Would you like to call forward some new panels?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I have Kim Rektal, Logan Endress and Neil Streg come up? And can we also have Jim Kowakowski, Nick Massey, Jen Rose and Andy Silley on deck remotely? Thank you.
Thank you. For those who are with us remotely, I actually have a question first for Superintendent Parker and then Dr. Matheson. Superintendent, how many years have you served as an educator?
Over 34.
So would it be fair to say that you would be a good judge of knowing when a student would be college and career ready?
Yes, especially based on all of the work that our state legislator has done and our State Board of Education has done, OSPI has done, as far as making sure that high-quality work goes into a high school diploma, I would say so, yes.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, Superintendent. Dr. Matheson, same questions?
Mr. Parker stole my thunder. We are very proud of the work of our, our teachers. We have a standards-based grading system in Vancouver Public Schools where we use many and varied methods to evaluate our students' learning based on standards, and we are proud of the work our teachers do. And so, yes, we feel confident that we can evaluate whether a student is ready to graduate high school and move on to post-secondary. We care about how our students are five and 10 years from graduation, and that's, that's the work that we are doing right now.
And how long have you been served as an educator?
This is my 25th year in education.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, for the record, my name is Kim Rektal, and I sit before you today in service to OSPI as the Director of Graduation and Pathway Preparation, a longtime former high school counselor and the mom of a recent grad and a current junior attempting to meet these graduation requirements in a post-COVID educational setting. While OSPI fully supports the need for more graduation pathways and acknowledges much of the information within this bill is worth celebrating, we also have signed in with concerns. First, I do want to thank Rep. Stonier, Chair Santos, our partners at the State Board and many others for continuing to seek effort or to seek expansion of existing graduation pathways that this body instituted in 2019. Approving a variety of options was a critical step to ensuring that we could help prepare each student for further education, employment or enlistment. The proposed change in definition of readiness in this bill to revert to either ELA or math or two or more other learning standards in other subject areas is duplicative of what we already expect students to do in meeting their 24-credit requirements. We also see that the considerable flexibility of this bill will make it very challenging for districts at the local level to report how and for whom it is being used, and will also make it challenging at the state level to really gauge the equitable access and completion and potentially post-secondary outcomes of engaging in this graduation pathway. We also see the potential for specific student populations, especially students with disabilities and English learners, being diverted to this option rather than supported in reaching some of the more rigorous graduation pathways. So if implemented, we would urge adding some language to strengthen the evaluation of students' experiences, to ensure consistency of implementation and access, and also more explicit reporting requirements, likely in combination with ERDC, as Rep. Stonier mentioned, to better ensure accountability and equitable implementation across districts and student groups. Appreciate your time. OSPI would welcome the opportunity to work with the sponsor, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, House Education Committee members. For the record, Logan Endress with the Washington State School Directors Association, here to weigh in as other on House Bill 1308. School directors strongly support an education system that works for each and every student, and in this case, the addition of the performance-based pathway. We're glad to see this issue raised, as it stands to provide additional flexibility and rigor for students as they pursue their chosen education and career in ways that are relevant and meaningful to them. We weighed in as other due to some concerns about Section 3. While we strongly believe in the need for equitable access to and participation in graduation pathway programs, we've heard from some school directors that they anticipate the need for additional funds or staff in order to implement the data analysis requirements in that section. I'll end by saying that WASD members continuously work to focus our education system on students so that they can pursue diverse skills, interests and abilities. We'd appreciate the opportunity to work together to advance this bill in a way that will work for all districts. Thank you very much.
Please proceed.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, for the record, Neil Streggy with the Washington Roundtable. The basic purpose of the pathways-based graduation requirement is so that every student graduates with a minimum of English and math skills. Students take the Smarter Balance Assessment at the, at the end of 10th grade, and the score that they have to achieve on that test in order to graduate is roughly where you would expect a student to be at the end of 9th grade. So despite what you've heard today about measuring career and college readiness, this is really about measuring minimum expectations for students. And then after students in 10th grade, they have two years and a variety of non-test pathways in order to, to meet those standards in the two subject areas. The bill before you today would essentially blow up that basic framework. It would not measure English, Language Arts or math, and it would allow students to graduate by demonstrating that they've applied learning standards in any of the core subject areas. So to be clear, you know, English, math, science, CTE, and then the, the other pathways would be health and fitness, social studies, fine arts. So essentially, what you're saying is students can graduate without basic English and math skills by taking, or by, by demonstrating, you know, health and fitness, fine arts, something else. And for us, that's inconsistent with the way that the, the pathway framework has been built out, and then this is the point of the graduation requirement, which is to measure basic English and math skills. This is particularly important, given the, the pandemic results that we've seen on assessments. Students are struggling in math and English, and moving away from that at this point, I think would be, would be a mistake. We're not opposed to an exhibition pathway. We're supportive of providing a diverse set of, of pathways and a mastery-based education. We would just like to see this particular pathway focused on English and math, and we've put together a language that would help improve the bill and would be happy to work with members to improve the bill. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have questions? We do. Representative Stonier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Neil, you and I have spent a lot of time talking about where we are in agreement and where our opinions diverge on this bill in particular. I don't believe your assessment of this being the assessment of minimum expectations is consistent with what we have heard from educators and from students as, as recent as in just this last Assembly Session. But my question for you is specifically to how different your position is at the Business Roundtable relative to your opposition in the policy that was before this committee last year, given the changes? Or would you say your opposition is consistent with what you, the position you've held in the past?
It's absolutely consistent with what we've said in the past. It's, it's the same. I mean, I think we, we are worried that students who graduate without basic, minimum English and math skills are not going to have a chance to move on to other pathways. And, you know, if a student has as interest in other things, that's great, but, but without the basic English and math skills, I think they're going to struggle with their, their pathways of the future.
Thank you for the follow-up, Madam Chair. So if I could just make an attempt to summarize and ask you if I'm consistent here, you hold strongly to the position that a high-stakes test that assesses, in your belief, a minimum standard of those, assess, of those standard, of those standards in English and math is the baseline for a graduation requirement, and that you believe that a high-stakes test is the most appropriate assessment for that?
That's not at all what I said. We supported House Bill 1599, and we worked with you on that bill to provide multiple pathways, including CTE, including the, you know, the military pathway, you know, AP, IB. There's lots of different options that are not test-based pathways, and we stand by those things as measurements of a student's basic English and math skills. But what this, this would do is it would create a performance exhibition, but not focused on English and math. We, we would support a performance-based pathway as long as it's focused on English and math.
Appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Further questions? Representative Clintock?
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, I'm going to give an example, and then tell me if I'm on the, understanding this correctly. My son did welding all three years in high school, and he's in a community college doing welding now. And obviously, that was his passion. He found that in high school, which is great. So would, he would have just have had to pass just welding and show his expertise in welding, but not in English and math? So it's, it's, this, you're saying it's, this would supersede the reading and writing requirements?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, the, and I'm assuming that question was directed at me.
Yeah, thank you.
If I'm understanding your question correctly, I think that if your, if your son took a welding class, if it was a, is part of his CTE requirement, and he took multiple CTE classes, that would qualify under the current graduation pathways, where CTE is, is one of the, the graduation pathways. Another option, if, if you pass the performance exhibition pathway the way that, that we would like it to be structured, you know, if he did measuring and, you know, some math and English baits, based parts of that welding class, he could submit that as a performance-based pathway, and he could graduate that way as well. But again, focused on English and math. What we're worried about is students who don't meet a minimum standard in English and math, who then, you know, just do, you know, a video on their, you know, on physical fitness or on, you know, ceramics or something like that, but they graduate from high school without that minimum ninth-grade standard in English and math. And that, that to us just is not going to give them a chance at a pathway beyond high school.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Are there further questions? The Chair has a couple of questions for Mr. Streggy. First of all, I would take, except- First of all, I would take exception to the way you described pathways and its connection to the standards. If you look closely at the bill on page 3, lines 10 through 24, it very specifically talks about reading from the bill. For the purposes of this section, demonstrate readiness means the student is able to apply state learning standards in A, English Language Arts and Mathematics, or B, two or more core subject areas that most directly align with the student's high school and beyond planned goals under RCW 28A230090. Again, the issue for the pathways is about creating demonstrations of career and college readiness. The issue that I think you're more focused in on is actually a question about credits and making sure that a student receives the credits that we've laid out in legislation to meet the 24 credit requirement, which is very specific. I guess my question to you is, do you not believe that standards on English Language Arts and Math can be incorporated in non-CTE performance-based exhibits?
I do think they can be, and I think they should be, but I think this bill allows...
And why shouldn't counselors and teachers be able to accept those forms of demonstration of mastery of English Language Arts and Math standards be allowed?
I think they should be allowed, and I think this bill...
And that's what this bill does.
This bill should be limited to English and math, and right now, it allows for fine arts, health and fitness, other things beyond...
Fine arts is exactly what my granddaughter did. I guess the last question I have is, do you have a degree in education, Mr. Streggy?
No.
Okay. Do we have further questions?
Yeah.
Yes. Representative Root.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, we're talking about kind of permissive situations, and you feel like these should be required, not permitted, not just permitted, English Language Arts and Math.
We think English Language Arts and Math are the focus of the current pathways, and they should be the focus of this pathway as well.
Yeah, thanks.
Further questions? Seeing none, thank you to this panel, and we will move to our online panelists, Jim Kolkowski.
Good afternoon, Chair Santos, members of the committee. My name is Jim Kolkowski. I'm the Director of the Rural Health Center, organization comprised of over 90 small and rural districts across our state. I'm here today to voice strong support for this bill and to express sincere appreciation to the sponsors, especially the main sponsor, Representative Stonier, for her perseverance. Establishing an additional graduation pathway that school districts may choose to offer is a good thing. Having students engage, complete a performance-based learning experience can be powerful, engaging, and authentic. The last 15 years of my career as superintendent was in Davenport School District. Several years ago, we implemented Big Picture School Pathways Program. We applied for and received a State Board waiver to transition to a standards and performance-based system where students can pick their pathway and they become deeply immersed in a project. They're required to demonstrate competencies in communication, social reasoning, quantitative reasoning, and personal qualities. Job shadows and internships are part of the program. One of the requirements of our program is that students present their performance-based project to the school board. And Representative Santos, the story you shared about your granddaughter completing her novel, one of our students presented, last year, they were working on a children's novel, and they were going to share that with members of the students in the elementary school. That is a performance-based project, and your granddaughter kind of did it on her own. This is one that will be supported by teachers and staff. Our program has provided a pathway for some students who may have dropped out if we hadn't had this program. For a variety of reasons, some students feel disconnected from the traditional school setting. The Big Picture School Program in the Davenport School District is staffed by an amazing teacher, equally amazing parent pro, and students are offered an educational program that's engaging, extremely rigorous, and personalized. I predict the story that you told us, Representative Santos, of your granddaughter, we're going to remember that story long after this testimony. But that's an example of memorable experiences that can be supported by a performance-based standard program. I urge you to support this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move next to Nick Massey.
Good afternoon, Chairman Santos and committee members, and also Representative McClintock and Representative Stonier from Southwest Washington. Hello. Thank you for representing us up there. I'm here to testify in support of this bill today. We've been working with high schools in Southwest Washington to have our industry, to help teach students, learn about our industry, and assist in placing them in our industry and my company. What we've been hearing is we need more options from students. We want to have students that are ready for college or a career. This bill could potentially benefit students by giving them more flexibility, control over their education, as well as providing opportunities to demonstrate mastery of subject matter through alternative means. This bill could also help address disparities in education by providing students with multiple pathways to graduation. I want to thank this committee for these bills that will assist us in our journey to have students have a choice of what they want to do after graduation, whether or not it's college or directly into industry. I want to respond that I support this bill wholeheartedly. I have been working with many school districts right now, and we have a big issue. This 24 credit system is not working. I want to say that real loud and clear right now. This 24 credit is not working. It's being inclusive of those people that are going to college, and we need to change it right now so we can have these other people that we don't see coming into the trades. We don't know where they're going, but it's a real issue with us out there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving next to Jen Rose.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Jen Rose, and I'm the Associate Superintendent of Structural Services at Lake Washington School District. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide feedback on this bill. At the beginning of this school year, 29% of Lake Washington 11th graders and 16% of 12th graders had not yet met at least one graduation pathway. When we look at different student groups, it's apparent that some struggle more than others to meet current graduation pathways. Aligned with our desire to support all students to graduation, we support the opportunity for students to demonstrate their knowledge in diverse ways. These new pathways may be terrific options for many students, particularly for student groups that may have historically experienced challenges in their graduation journey. We would welcome additional opportunities to provide diverse pathways aligned with students' strengths and goals. However, I signed in as other today because while we support definitely expanded pathways, there are impacts to our district, our staff, and our students that include significant financial and time investments that I want the committee to be aware of as they consider this bill. Implementing and evaluating a new graduation pathway would need central coordination, development of resources, and approval of these experiences. Developing and administering a process for implementing high-quality performance-based assessments in a way that fully supports students is complex and would require significant resources to develop initially and then to administer and sustain over time. We would be excited to provide additional diverse opportunities for our students to demonstrate their strengths and recognize their accomplishments. However, we ask that any new requirements you consider be funded and resourced appropriately so that the requirements have a deep and positive impact to be all desire for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to Mr. Sili.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Andy Sili. I'm speaking on behalf of Lakewood Cares, a 501(c)(4) community service organization serving the community of Lakewood for over 22 years. We testify with position other. Lakewood Care supports the expansion of graduation pathways. However, this bill lacks a key component, the assessment of actual effectiveness of those pathways. It's one thing to pass a student's completion of a pathway, but without post-graduation assessment, there's no way to determine whether a diploma means anything. We recommend requiring post-graduation assessment of each student's completion of his or her graduation pathway by way of surveys by such interested parties as are identified in the deleted text of Section 3, Subsection 2. Here's an example that might be an effective assessment plan. School districts already have names and addresses of graduated students. A survey could be sent out to graduates or a sample of graduates with results compiled at the district level and forwarded to OSPI for consolidation. The survey would ask appropriate questions about subjects such as the job or education pursued, satisfaction with graduates' education in ELA, math, and science, as it applies to their current jobs, and future education plans and salary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have questions of this panel? We do. Representative Stonier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for Jen. Jen, I'm wondering if it is of any comfort knowing that this pathway is by design not mandated but permissible for students and schools, dual-school districts, where they feel it would be useful for their students and are equipped to put that pathway in place?
Thank you, Representative Stonier, for that explanation. It appears that Jen logged off, but thank you for sharing that. Are there further questions? The chair wants to simply ask Superintendent the same question I asked the previous educators. How long have you been an educator, and do you believe that you have the qualifications and experience to deem a student college and career-ready?
That's a great question. I've been educator over 41 years, still working on it, now working with college students who want to become superintendents, or student people out in the field that will become superintendents. I think the school folks, principals, teachers can have, with their experience, a great acknowledgement. You know, even the school board, when I mentioned during my testimony that students that are in our Big Picture Program, which is performance-based, present their projects to the school board with an update. The skills that they have to share, public speaking, preparation, they have to do their homework, they have to be prepared, but I think we can be very good judges of this program. And again, we're creating education that's memorable and that's specifically tied to a student's interests, and I think that's a game changer.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. There being no further questions for this panel, Vice Chair Shavers.
Can we have Amy Brackenbury come up? Thank you.
And while she's coming forward, would you like to read into the record those who have signed in?
We have 392 total non-testifiers, 386 pro, 2 con, 4 others.
Welcome, Amy.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members of the committee, and I appreciate you calling me back up here so I could just talk with you really briefly about the Washington School Counselors Association and our support for this legislation. You've heard a lot of great testimony, and I don't want to be redundant, but I do want to let you know that the Washington School Counselors did a survey of their members earlier, actually, it was last month, and asked what are the top things that they think that the legislature could do to help them better serve their students? And expanding graduation pathways was in their top three. So this is a high priority for school counselors. They would very much like to see expanding graduation pathways legislation passed. We would love to continue to work with the sponsor if there are changes that need to be made, but we support this bill and commend it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this testifier? Seeing none, thank you very much for sharing with us, and...